Lord, please rise for a moment of silence, prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Oh Lord, giver of life and source of all that we have, we thank you for the many gifts you have given us and we invite your presence in our lives at all times. Help us to use your gifts wisely, teach us to share them generously, encourage us to faithfully answer your call to serve one another and give us with your grace to know that by answering your call, we will be truly free. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of constituting the accuracy of written minutes. Tapes are reused, eliminating recorded records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held April 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. O'Gore?
Recording me as not voting since I was absent from that meeting.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes. Are there any guests concerned concerning county business, please tell. Mr. Kreske, please state your name and rank.
I'm Sean Kreske, I'm in part. I see a lot in the paper right now going on with the London Open shutting down. You guys have any comments or are you guys looking at trying to keep that open somehow and work with the state on maybe safer trails, something like that? Any comments from you guys on that?
No, not really. And I think what's thought about the issue really is the amount of rescues, the people that have died up there. When you have a significant, I would say, or anytime someone dies as a result of whatever up there, we had at least two deaths there, I know, last year from swimming incidents, you know, and we had people falling off falls. It's a huge strain on the resources for the emergency services. I think I mentioned it last week a little bit, that if we're lucky, any of those responses are only a half hour. It could be up to four or five hours because depending on the location, size of the person, circumstances. The state is involved in complaints, so it's definitely up to the state. Or I can think that part was the game commission. Really, I have no other comments there. Probably prompted it because of all the injuries and deaths.
Maybe something to work with the state or something like that, maybe possibly like having it open like on a weekend and have like maybe one of their officers there just to try to make sure they got the proper footwear. I mean, like you Wayne, I've been up and down and I've fallen many times bringing people off of it in the fire departments. But just, you know, maybe, I see a lot of people in the community about, you know, upset about it, but then I understand the logistics on getting people up there, bring people out, stuff like that, you know.
It's a shame, but yeah, it's beautiful trail. Thank you, Mr. Kreske. Any other guests, Mr. Dory?
My name is John Dory, I'm a concerned citizen. I want to thank the commissioners for defunding the construction on Cecil Hannah Street. And that means we're halfway there. The other half, of course, is to abandon the project. The engineering report is completed, engineer geologist, I should say, and it's heavily in favor of the petitioners' point of view. And it also, I want to let you know, includes no demolition with the maintenance garage there. The access to the report will be mentioned by others in the petitioners group here. Again, abandoned project, you guys had good intentions. The public will forgive the preparation money you put up, that they won't forgive another 13 million for a project nobody wants. And I mean, nobody wants it. We have signatures for over 3,000 people now. How much information do you need that nobody wants the project? Even the people that work for the county. When I approached them, they say, hey you, I'd love to sign it, but you know I work, my livelihood depends on the county. So it's not a problem with you people individually. You're good guys, you've been here how many years helping to guide this community? It's just that your leadership style, autocratic instead of democratic, is your problem. Now, if you let some of us help you out with that, with a small oversight committee, with stakeholders, with people representing the borough and the business community and the historic preservation committee, help us, let us help you with some of your problems. But the way you approach it is a problem and it has been a problem for a long time. So the question is, are you able, are you guys able to switch gears a little bit and become more democratic? Thank you.
Any other guests?
Yeah, my name is James Dulcey, I reside at 174 Dulcey Road, Carben County, Packer Township. I have a question. The county owns two bridges in Packer Township. One you guys upgraded a few years back, which we all appreciate because it was a safety feature. We also have another bridge, which is a three-ton weight limit, okay? And I had brought this up at a Packer Township meeting, all right? I was concerned about school buses crossing this bridge, all right? Mr. Gerhart stated publicly, in front of Mr. the attorney, okay, I ran oil trucks across there, don't worry about it. Now, does that give that bus company permission to run across a three-ton bridge? You got a safety factor here. I don't know if Mr. Gerhart is an expert at bridges, I am certainly not. Okay, but I went down and I looked at the deck of that bridge. The deck is all cracked up and you guys put three-ton weight limit on that for a reason. And when I read that statement he made, he's concerned about safety of the prisoners and safety of the workers, which I agree, okay? I don't agree with what the way he handled that water situation, all right? Here's the safety factor with school kids. Now, what do you have to say, Mr. Gerhart? Or are you gonna go back and get the answer and tell me in three, four days?
Mr. Dulcey, you understand the safety issue and I'm not sure.
I know, he's not gonna do anything, but would you two guys, Bill and Wayne, would you guys check this out? Stop these buses from crossing a three-ton bridge? Because if somebody goes through that bridge, I think the county would have a big liability problem because a commissioner made the statement, just go ahead and do it, ignore it. And you can't ignore it.
No, I agree 100%. But we will check on the status.
I would appreciate that.
And if there are more buses traveling across here, I'm sure they're over that three-ton limit.
Absolutely.
We'll notify the school district as well as the contract.
And I think you should also make a statement to all the people, truckers, other people that deliver stuff in the area, to ignore his statement of the three-ton, just ignore it. If he wants to run an oil truck across there that's overloaded, that's his business. But I don't want to see school buses run across there anymore. And I appreciate what you and Bill have done. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dulcey, is there anyone else?
Yeah, my name's Mark, this is in reference to the demolition of the county maintenance building. What we know so far about Flagstaff Mountain, rock slide on the mansion house, $800,000 fix on High Street, million-dollar fix Ray Street, High Street wall, cave-in rocks on Ray Street, former Keith Pry residence, cave-in behind the Y and C A. When you look from Cecil Hannah Street, sightline, state marks, southeast cemetery, held up by a 200-year-old hand-blade rock wall. Who will be liable for any damage done to the rock wall when building blocks beneath it are removed? My expertise is marine recovery, inspection salvage. Why would you build a $600,000 maintenance building with no emergency services? Equipment mains cripples and kills and people need to be able to use a bathroom. Walk 500 yards if emergency services are needed. You know, what are your answers to the question? What, you know, your $600,000 maintenance building, why would you not have emergency services in there for the employees?
I don't know why you would call them emergency services.
Emergency services, if an engine blows up, you quick blow the chemical off with the water. If you have to wash your hands, you know, you know, you hear, this is simple. Nobody's gonna get hurt. I fire up a piece of machinery, it's wired wrong, the engine blows up. You know, things like that happen. I mean, fires burn.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? All right, Chris Luke.
Right, sorry, ITZ, the reason I didn't say my last name is I didn't want to be cut off because you said we only have three minutes, you know, rules, regulations.
All right, Mr. Chris Lukasevich from Jim Thorpe. So why would he call that a maintenance facility? Well, because Commissioners Notestein and Tom Gerhart said, let's see, Archives has a new home on East Fourth Street and our county maintenance will be relocated to our new storage facility. So indeed, it is a maintenance facility that has no running water, has no bathroom, has no emergency kit there to take care of those emergency marks, so you're actually spot on. Commissioner Gerhart, what evidence is there that a $15 million emergency operation training facility on the Broad Mountain will resolve the volunteer shortage issue in Carben County? It's Commissioner Gerhart, I was directed that too.
I'm not directed to know.
Yes, it was.
I'm the one, I'm the chair of that emergency services committee. And let me state here and now that the $15 million was to include a structure up there which basically is being scrubbed because we had to go into a, we have a more critical program right now that we have to supply court spaces for the additional court personnel. So that would come down quite a bit, the estimated cost of daily train, just give them an in-county facility.
Well, we know during the week, they actually do firehouse training. They don't actually train out of town one weeknight, nor will they use that facility. Then I'll continue to use my three minutes. So we're being reactive, not proactive, because this is not, is not new and has been highlighted in Pennsylvania Burning, 1976. Senate Resolution 60, Report 2004. Emergency medical services in the Commonwealth of PA, Report 2013, among many others. So all of a sudden, it's an issue when there's career politicians sitting right here at the commissioner's desk who are now being reactive instead of having been addressing this for the last 20 years. So now we're in a crisis. No, the crisis has been here since at least the 1970s and now all of a sudden, it's an issue. That's being reactive, not proactive. And what we elect officials to be are proactive, not reactive. Thank you.
Just to clear the record there, Mr. Lukasevich, back in 2008, this committee had started for training. The county fire and sales division has been in effect for many, many years.
It may have been in effect, but nothing has come out of it.
When I first became a commissioner, I presented many resolutions to the county commissioners association. And you will find out possibly that those things are not always the easiest things to accomplish.
Let's move on. Any other guests concerned with county business?
I just have a statement about last week's speech from Commissioner Gerhart about respect. And the way John Dory was treated last week on Monday and Thursday, I felt was a disgrace. He was an 87-year-old man who doesn't just talk about the problems in our town, he tackles them. He sleeps several nights on a cot at the family promise to ensure that families are kept together and provided for while in his facility's care. That, I think, deserves respect. He's earned it and sitting him down in less than two minutes and telling him he was being redundant, I believe is wrong. And I think he deserves a public apology.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Dory for his time with family promise. We know how important that is as a board, we know how important that is to the homeless families that need help. And I applaud you for that service, Mr. Dory.
Any other guests concerned in county business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Any further exceptions, sir?
No, we're done.
The budget transfers.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of payroll check numbers, 709-80 through 71023, and direct deposit check numbers, 6007752 through 6008154, for the payroll paid through the payroll fund checking account. For all county funds totaling $588,859.74. This is the payroll dated April 12th, 2019.
Motion to ratify. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Approval of check numbers, 205089 through 205201, for expenditures to the general fund clearing account totaling $361,719.45.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes, with the exception of the bills for Times News, Blue Ridge Communications, Palmerton Telephone Company and Penn Teledata, to which I abstain because I'm a part-time employee of the Times News, which is a sister company of Blue Ridge Communications, Penn Teledata and the Palmerton Telephone Company. And I would like to present to the keeper of records a memorandum stating my potential conflict of interest with Penn Corp-related companies as per the advice of the State Ethics Commission.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Treasurer's report?
Please approve. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
The personnel report?
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed, copies will be made available to the press upon request. Communications, Tower Services. For approval and execution, request from the 911 director to purchase an Onman 25 kilowatt generator with automatic transfer switch under state contract from Tower Services on Leavenock, of Parisford, Pennsylvania, to the Big Boulder Tower Site New Shelter at a cost of $19,134 plus additional items including a 4x8 concrete pad at a cost of $5,815 for a total cost of $24,949.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Human services, for acceptance, the fiscal year 2018-2019 State Food Purchase Program Third Quarter Expense and Data Report, as submitted by Shepherd House Incorporated to the Department of Agriculture.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
For acceptance, the 2018-2019 Second Quarter, January through March 2019, Inventory Participation Report, and invoice and expense reimbursement request for the Carben County Temporary Emergency Food Assistance Program, which was submitted to the Department of Agriculture.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Solicitor's report?
Thank you. Elections for approval and execution. Again, to the agreement with election systems and software, changing the current term from February 1, 2019 through January 31, 2020, to February 1, 2019 through May 31, 2019. All of the terms and conditions of the agreement shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect.
So move. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
And state extension for approval and execution. Again, to the agreement date of May 28, 2009, between the county and Charlene Lynn Summit Hill for janitorial services at Penn State Extension Office, Lynch Trail, Jim Thorpe. Compensation shall be increased from $250 to $300 per month effective May 1, 2019. All other terms and conditions of the agreement shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Purchasing for approval and execution. Recommendation from the purchasing manager to accept a proposal from W.B. Mason Company for sale and delivery of office supplies to all county offices at an estimated cost of $51,327.71 per year. The pricing, terms, and conditions are compliance with P.A. Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract 004081 for office, school, and library supplies. The annual sales amount is based upon estimated quantities purchased of the products listed. The contract term and subsequent renewal periods are in accordance with the Co-Stars contract.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Tax assessment for approval and payment. Education received from Tax Assessment Bureau verifying that a refund of county real estate tax is due to property of Barbara Ann Willis in Minster Borough. The taxpayer is requesting a refund since the building was removed in November of 2017 and the refund is for 2018 county taxes in the amount of $46.64.
Mr. Refund. Second motion.
Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
Nothing further.
Any further business? Commissioners reports, Mr. O'Gore.
I would just like to say, in offering the prayer this morning, I was remiss in not calling to the attention of the passing of Franklin Rook. And Franklin Rook was a public official in Carben County for many years, both on the school district and township supervisors' levels. And he was also my opponent in two elections and I want to say, he was a gentleman and he treated people with respect. I've crossed his paths many, many times and I appreciate it, the type of guy Franklin Rook was. And so I offer my condolences to his family and to Mahoning Township, who actually lost a very good supervisor and a dedicated public servant. And in closing, I'd just like to wish the residents of Carben County and most especially all of our coworkers, a happy and healthy Easter season.
Mr. Gerhart?
I too want to send my thoughts and prayers to the Rook family. Certainly a sad day for Mahoning Township, a sad day for Carben County, and also want to wish coworkers and the residents of Carben County a blessed and happy Easter.
Mr. Knutson?
I also want to recognize Mr. Rook for his community service with the emergency medical services, with the fire department. He's still active with the fire department. He was a very active member in the council of governments, trying to make this county a better place to live, working together through collaboration, communications, trying to keep the taxes down in this county. He would surely be missed. He was an opponent, I shouldn't say an opponent, I ran with Mr. Rook one year and worked out the way we planned, but that happens a lot. But Mr. Rook was a community-oriented person, a gentleman and respectful of the others, even though he disagreed and Mr. O'Gore could tell you on some issues in development of property. Although we had our differences, he was still a friend to all of us. And he would surely be missed. My condolences to his family and wish everyone else a happy Easter. Okay? Meeting adjourned. This time, I'll call the monthly meeting of the Retirement Board to order. And I'll turn the meeting over to the board's secretary, Howard Thompson.
Okay, thank you Wayne and good morning.
Good morning.
Our first item would be to approve the minutes of our last meeting held March 28th, 2019.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Kramp, yes. Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
I would ask, are there any guests concerned in Carben County Retirement Board business? Hearing none, there are no executive sessions to report on since our last public meeting. Ask the board to ratify disbursements for the month of March and they would be check numbers 40205 through 40229, and also direct deposit numbers 7002733 to 7003080, and a total of $389,302.99.
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Kramp, yes. Mr. O'Gore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
We have the March activity report. You can see there are four members that left county service and they took a refund of their accumulated deductions. We paid out one death benefit. There were two superannuation retirements for the month of March and two pensioners passed away in the month of March. Disbursements for March, monthly benefits, $372,074.90. Refunds, $2,612.42. Death benefits, $14,615.67. Again, our total disbursements for March, $389,302.99. Our portfolio value as of March 31st, $77,298,121. Being we're at the end of the quarter, I did do a cash flow performance report, give the board an idea where we're at as of March 31st. You can see, we started the year off with a portfolio value of $72,68,396. Disbursements so far, we paid monthly benefits, $1,117,820. Refunds, $12,735. Death benefits, $14,616. And we also reimbursed a general fund for 2018 administrative expense, $213,146. So our total disbursements for the first quarter, $1,358,317. Our income during that period, we have member contributions totaling $184,785. So that brings us to an adjusted beginning balance of $70,894,864. Again, our portfolio value at the end of the quarter, $77,298,121. The increase to the portfolio year-to-date, $6,403,257. And that's an increase of 9.04%. So you can see, it's evident that the first quarter was a great performance quarter, which was very important considering we're coming off that negative year for 2018. You know, we hoped they hit about 9% for the full year and we're at 9% now for the first quarter. So we're just hoping we'll continue to have the portfolio in a position to take advantage of what the market gives and hopefully, we have a continued increase between now and the end of the year. So are there any questions on the activity report or the performance report? Correspondence, I don't have any. Our solicitor?
Nothing additional.
Is okay. You can see, we don't have anybody with us today, so I just like to wish the board members a happy Easter. And turn it back over to you, Wayne.
Any further business for the retirement board? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Okay. Kelly?
I think you're on the spot today.
Would you be able to tell me where we stand and what the timeline is for the Cecil Hannah Street project?
Uh, we're still waiting for the courts for appointment of a judge. Yale DC.
Okay, that's all I have.
Kelly?
I have nothing to say, I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Why did you guys shorten that contract from January 31st, 2020, down to May 31st, 2019?
That was because...
I think because of the new system.
Because we were supposed to have this place and that's an election board issue right now and I know the election board has been, to let the board speak to that. The election boards, who are here, might say, are no longer in that board right now.
Yeah, well, the status of that, of course, is the election board members are currently in the process of reviewing and looking over the installation of the various machines and will make a recommendation at some point in time to the county commissions for purchase of new machines.
Okay. And just one other thing that wasn't on the agenda, but Commissioner Knutson you kind of said about with regards to the training tower. What did you, when you mentioned about training tower being scrubbed?
Look, not the training tower. Initially, in the overall plan, we were looking at another building with classroom-type settings, vehicle garage for the vehicles we have up there right now, the man vehicle, et cetera. The ATB available at the DMA office, things of that nature. A bigger room for meetings. Right now, the... Right now, the biggest room we really have under the courthouse, and it's a, a struggle for us a lot of times in training and in, uh, meetings where we don't have enough seating capacity, we're about maxed out, E M A office now, but in order to run, uh, larger training programs, uh, maybe up to a hundred people when we have lecture coming in for emergency services, lightsight, uh, things of that nature, so, uh, things got really bad in the court system, we certainly need that space, and, uh, you know, I, as much as I hated to do it, you know, uh, just gonna have to cut it out and, uh, set our priorities in that.
Okay. So then, on the project, is obviously moving forward the emergency lane right now, and then you're doing the burn tower?
Yeah.
That is it for the project then, is from what I'm gathering right now?
Pardon?
That is it then, there's the burn tower and-
Yes, we're still working on finalizing specs on that facility. The firemen need live, hands-on training. There will be three burn rooms, they're going to be of Class A materials, uh, a little hard to train in your stations, unlaying hose lines, doing night work, running pump operations, ladder work, there'll be a system for tall building where you'll be doing ladder work, ladder rescue. The facility will all be, also be used by the, uh, police throughout Carbon County for their training, uh, they're, hopefully have that separate building in there, it's in the plans now for active shooter training, and it'll give them an opportunity, and they have been involved in the training or in the, uh, planning process to things that they would like to see in a burning building, when they go into a multi-story facility or building throughout the county, uh, they need to know how to operate stairwells, closets from outside, et cetera, with a multi-purpose, uh, for, uh, rope rescues, which is another big issue, and Gwedenoco will do it all the time, uh, so they have to be properly trained in rope rescues, et cetera. We're looking at future expansion possibilities with propane-fired props, vehicle fires, and other types of, uh, training props, uh, possibly tankers, hazardous materials training, et cetera. So there's a lot of different things, including combined space, which I didn't even talk about, we get into so many different types of scenarios that we cannot do in our hometowns or stations. So it's a multi-agency, just not the county fire, not just the police, it was planned right from the beginning that we had people on that committee throughout the county, and with different backgrounds, including a person from zoning, police officer, DMS, trying to include as much as possible in this training facility to meet the needs and the sheriff, I can tell you, I'm sure he sits on that committee, that use of force is an issue, I had pictures of them training in the, um, basement of the courthouse where the ceiling was very low, and they do use of force training, they do the pepper spray training, uh, you know, so there's a heck of a lot more involved in training the people real, and that's what I tried to stress last week, so, okay? Hope that answers your question?
Yep. So then, there'll still be a multi, a multi-use facility, multi-use burn facility that's going to be for everybody?
For everybody, yeah.
It's just not the-
Including police-
E O C that's going to move forward.
Kind of operations, et cetera. Yes.
Okay. And, um, then with that money, since you're saying now with the court, then you'll just move that to where you need to with the, the space with those projects?
Well, uh, you mean the additional building?
Yeah, because you're saying that you're not, you're not going to be using-
That full amount that we initially planned for both facilities, and it would have been a two-phase, that was what we were looking at in the different phases. One was the access road, one A was the burn building, the training site, you know, and then, uh, two, phase two, would have been that building, but, uh, you know, the, we didn't get it going earlier, we had talked about it for years, we finally set up a committee, or we lost our other training, uh, facility in Lehigh that we did have to, to roster and deterioration of the structure, uh, we finally got some momentum behind it and supported the commissioners to, you know, step up and, uh, train, because the municipalities themselves cannot afford this. This is one of those issues where it should be a, well, just like we're trying to do with the, uh, council of governments, to work together because not one municipality can do it on their own, so the county is stepping forward, applying for the grants to try to make this happen.
Okay. That's all I have, then, thank you, gentlemen, happy Easter.
Okay. What's yours and you? Oh, sorry.
Can I, necessarily. Um, can you offer any more details about the D N L trail connector, any's been attached to it?
No, you're not, uh, that's for the other side of the river, that's just Jim Thorpe, uh, side of it. Uh, I know Alyssa talked about it a little bit yesterday at the nonprofit forum, uh, but, uh, it is the last link that's really gone. Unfortunately, like our training center project, uh, the weather is really hurting, uh, as it has with other projects, uh, if you go down and look at the Lehigh now, it's gone down, but, uh, when I came in Monday morning, the heavy equipment was under, was, uh, was parked down below, had to be moved, et cetera. The trail is underwater this morning yet, and the forecast for the future doesn't look too bright either, so it's really gonna set the timeline back, I hope not too much, I hope there's more they can do on the higher elevation of the trail, so, uh, as far as I know, they're still on schedule for the end of June.